All right, it's six o'clock. Pastor Billy McCloud, would you come forward and do the invocation, please?
Father, we love you and we thank you for this day that you've blessed us with, and we just ask now for your wisdom and your guidance in this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Including politicians.
With that, I'll call the September 16th regular city council meeting to order. Mrs. Vaughn, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here.
All right, preliminary matters, agenda additions, deletions, and adoptions from the council, are there any?
None here.
No, sir.
Lou, do approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Passes five, nothing. All right, we have proclamations. I will read the first one. We have actually two people to come forward. One of them is the Daughters of the American Revolution. I don't know who the person is, and the other one is Holly Hamilton. And what this proclamation deals with is the Constitution. And in the last six months or so, I've been actually studying the process of the Constitution and how it came to be, and James Madison, perhaps our most brilliant president. And it was not an easy process, and without Mr. Madison, I don't think we would have gotten it. But upon it is framed our whole government. So I will read as follows. Whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Continental Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize this document its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law, 9/15 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating the week of September 17th as Constitutional Week. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida does hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2014 as Constitution Week, and asks our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the gardening of our liberties, remembering the lost rights may never be regained. Welcome. Tell us who you are and tell us about this.
My name is Cindy Heinman, and I'm representing the Treasure Coast Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And we thank you very much for reading this proclamation and helping us to remind all Americans how important it is to follow and to know what's going on with our Constitution. Thank you.
Is there a second person here, or is this? Okay, well, come forward and receive your proclamation.
Thank you, Cindy.
If we get to shake your hand. Oh, I've never done this before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment to remind you I'll make some —
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have another proclamation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, would Robert Setola and Colonel Young please come forward? This is for Family History Month.
Glad to have Cindy back.
You're really gonna get this routine down now. Whereas in 2001, Congress first passed a resolution that stated, "By searching for our roots, we come closer together as a human family." The month of October has come to be celebrated as Family History Month. And since 1983, the Indian River Genealogical Society has established a further genealogical research and promote interest in family and local history. And the Indian River Genealogical Society has consistently assisted and supported the Julian W. Lowstein Archive Center and Genealogy Department of the Indian River County Main Library. And the Indian River Genealogical Society has published books, researched veteran records, and provided hundreds of lectures, workshops, and seminars educating the public in family history. And on Saturday, October 4th, 2014, the Indian River Genealogical Society will bring family history awareness and education to the residents of Indian River County by introducing the first annual Family History Expo and hosting an open house at the Indian River County Main Library Archive Center and Genealogy Department on Sunday, October 5th, 2014. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida does hereby proclaim the month of October as Family History Month and hereby congratulate the society on its work and success in furthering interest in the legacy of our past.
First of all, I'd like to introduce, I'm Tony Young, Pete Kersey, Walt Chazot, and Cindy Heinman. And out of the group here, I would say Walt and Pete directly had application to what I want to share with you right now. And Cindy, by virtue of her legacy with the Genealogy Society, built the foundation upon which we worked. There was a politician last year, I believe, has the famous quote, "What does it matter?" This week on Friday is the National POW MIA Day. And when we went out on the island, we were asked to look at some family research. And we came across a fellow's name by the name of Robert L.A. Hurst. And Robert Hurst was a young man from Walbasso. And he is the uncle of one of my neighbors in McCannish Park. And by fate, he sent his postcard back to his parents in Walbasso and said, "Mom and Dad, I'm going to this movie tomorrow night. It's in California, and then I'll be deploying," my word, "to the Philippines." And shortly thereafter was Pearl Harbor. And shortly thereafter was the fall of Manila. And roughly 10,000 American soldiers and about 40,000 Filipinos were marched off on an infamous march into the hills of the Philippines. And that became known as the Batan Death March. And by fortune, Mr. Hurst's account came back to his family because at the end of the war, and right before it, in April, there were some Rangers that did a secret raid to that camp, Cabana Tuhan POW Camp. And they liberated all of the American POWs that had been taken hostage by the POWs. And Andy Abraham was there, and he was there at the time of the death of Hurst from disease. And he wrote that down and came back and shared that with his family. So we would not have known that had it not been for looking back in family history and for his mom keeping that postcard and sharing it with her family. So if ever you think that those little scripts of paper that you've written to mom and dad or to your uncle about your travails are unimportant, I would assure you that with the likes of people like us, we might come across them and give a trail for the brothers and folks that follow you. So thank you for letting us help undiscover that heritage for Vero Beach because it's alive and well, and we appreciate it and hope that you come on the third?
October 4th.
October 4th and 5th, 4th to the Presbyterian Church for the day, and the 5th over to the main library. Because we've got a fantastic archive center, and Pam Cooper is a marvelous librarian and family historian. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, honey. Always. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll call forward Mr. Chef Wright, who is our attorney on the electrical matters.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, citizens. Glad to be back in this beautiful part of the world. Thank you. I'd just have an update on various activities that relate to our electric utility system. With respect to the potential sale to FPL, there's really no news. I saw Mr. Bryan a few weeks ago and asked him if the FPL had any further ideas about how we might be able to restructure the deal to achieve a closing. And he said, "No," but they're still thinking about it. And I said, "Great, so are we. Let's stay in touch," and that was that. As you know, we have two legal proceedings that have been initiated against the city. The first was initiated by the Town of Indian River Shores on July 18th. That, as a suit by one governmental entity against another, is subject to the mandatory jurisdiction of the Florida Governmental Dispute Conflict Resolution Act.
That's a mouthful.
It is, it is. And accordingly, that proceeding has been abated while the procedures under the Conflict Resolution Act run their course. The first meeting, the first step in that process is to have one or more conflict assessment meetings. We had the first conflict assessment meeting with the town and the county on August 21st. Folks said what they had to say. I generally explained how we got where we are. I explained to them that we would happily close the sale with FPL that day or the next day, if there were a way to accomplish that. And I explained to them that our rates are higher than we wish they were, and that we are doing everything we can to try to lower them. I'll come back to that, I'll go ahead and touch on that briefly. Mr. O'Connor and I met with Mr. Browder and Mr. Aspuru of OUC, actually, the day before the conflict assessment meeting, August 20th, and had what I would characterize as promising but non-specific discussions. We are meeting with them again this coming Friday, the 19th. Honestly, I had tried to get the meeting before today, but schedules for busy people being what they were didn't work out. So Friday's the first day we can make it happen, and we're meeting with them on that date. The next conflict assessment meeting, which we agreed on at the meeting on the 21st, is to be held a week from this Friday, that is, on September 26th. The focus of that meeting will be to discuss rate reduction measures. I will be distributing to the county and the town a list of potential rate reduction measures before that meeting as a vehicle for discussion. Those measures are extensive, and they include renegotiating our 2008 PPA with OUC. When you're trying to lower rates, you have to put everything on the table. It is conceivable, not necessarily a great idea, but it's conceivable we could terminate the agreement with OUC. But that would subject us to exposure to $50 million in liquidated damages. That's why I say I don't think it's the greatest idea. But it's a possibility. We can mothball the city power plant, and there have been preliminary discussions as to the logistics of that between the city electric staff and OUC staff. And the idea is to mothball Big Blue and replace it with purchased power at a lower overall cost. It may be possible to reduce the electric utility labor force through attrition. I don't know if that's possible. We have to make sure we maintain our good and reliable service, but if we can do it, we can do it. Additionally, as I assure you know, Mr. Gory's group, the Finance Commission, identified a number of rate reduction measures, and I'll be sending a copy of that, along with my preliminary list, to the county and the town. But there are some options in there we need to consider. Conducting an optimization study of the electric operations, and I understand we're on track to either get an RFP out or engage a consultant to do that by the end of the year. Have that right? We may be able, as may be identified in the optimization study, to replace some electric utility functions with contract services, if it's cost-effective to do so. Everything's on the table. We can at least talk about you, the council can talk about reducing the general fund transfer and increasing taxes. And we can talk about, I know it's been discussed and not going anywhere, but we can talk about financing capital expenditures for a defined period of years as a means to lower required cash flow that could be translated into rate reductions. As I said when I spoke to the conflict folks at the county and the town at the conflict assessment meeting, I'm optimistic that we can make a significant dent at closing the gap between where FPL's rates are and where ours are. I don't think we can get there, and I told them that, too. The big item there is going to be renegotiating the capacity payments that we paid OUC under our 2008 power purchase agreement. And I know I've said this to all of you individually, and I said it to the conflict folks at the conflict assessment meeting. That was a good contract in April of 2008. The earth shifted in fall of 2008. Financial markets basically closed down for a couple of days, and world energy markets shifted rather dramatically. And whereas the price of natural gas was heading through $9 a million BTU in April of 2008 on its way to 13 and 1/2 in June of 2008, it fell back to, for periods of time since then, less than $3 a million BTU. That really changed the landscape. Additionally, with the Great Recession, sales went flat. Actually, sales declined. Florida experienced its first population decline in recorded history. I want to say it was in 2010. I think it could have been 2009. I think it was in 2010. And it's coming back, and sales are coming back, but not like they were. Capacity market is soft. OUC has some incentive to work with us on this, and I'm optimistic that we can get somewhere. It's the grail for me in this process, and we're just gonna do the very best that we Briefly, back to the town's lawsuit. They've raised four claims. One is that their franchise that they executed with us in 1986 trumps the Public Service Commission's territorial authority, and that upon expiration of the franchise, they claim they can kick us out. This is essentially the same claim raised, really, when you get down to it. It's the same claim raised in 14 separate questions by Indian River County at the PSC. That without a franchise, we have no right to serve. We naturally disagree. Our authority to serve derives from our own home rule powers, the fact that we served from 1920 through the present day, the fact that we served till 1986 without a franchise of any sort with anybody, and also from the PSC's territorial orders saying that Vero Beach serves here and FPL serves here in this part of the world. The town also claims that our rates are unreasonable. Naturally enough, we don't agree with that. Our rates are higher than we wish they were. We're gonna do what we can to lower them. But that doesn't make them unreasonable. They're virtually equal to Duke's rates. They're lower than Gulf Power's rates. They're lower than Florida Public Utilities Company's rates. These are all rates approved by the Florida Public Service Commission. They're right on top of the average for the Florida munis. If you wait by utility, they're less than the Florida IOU's average. If you wait by customers, they're greater than the Florida IOU's average. They're higher than FPL's, folks. There's just no way around it, and we're gonna do what we can to lower them. But proving that they're unreasonable is a very tall order for the town. We'll see how that comes out. There's a claim regarding the town's alleged obligation to conduct a referendum pursuant to legislation that was enacted in 2008, and we're kind of working on that. Really, the legislation would, if the referendum were successful, require utility authority to be proposed, and we have expressed our willingness to work with the other parties toward setting up a utility authority. Finally, there's a due process claim that honestly has been pretty much debunked by the Florida Supreme Court in a significant 1968 decision. It just says, "If you're not happy with the city's rates, even if you live outside the city, you can petition the city council. They have to listen to you. They don't have to do what you want. Or you can go to court if you think the rates are unreasonable." The town has gone to court. If necessary, and I'm hoping it won't be, but if necessary, we'll have a trial on whether our rates are unreasonable. I like our facts. Moving on to the PSC declaratory statement docket filed by the county on July 21. We responded in accordance with the rules on August 14. We have two intervenors and four amicus curiae, friends of the court, who have filed pleadings in support of the city's position, and those include Florida Power and Light Company, Duke Energy Florida, Tampa Electric Company, the Florida Electric Cooprenives Association, the Florida Municipal Electric Association, and the Orlando Utilities Commission. The county has responded. It was originally scheduled to be heard by the Public Service Commission on October 2nd, but recently, the county sent in a letter waiving the statutory clock. Sorry, back up. The October 2nd date was necessitated by the fact that's the last PSC Public Service Commission Agenda Conference date before the 90-days clock specified in the declaratory statement statute within which the agency has to rule. The county has now waived the clock, and it is expected to be and is scheduled to be decided on by the commission on November 25th, which happens to be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Other than that, I think I covered the rate reduction efforts and the fact that we will be meeting. We met with OUC once. As I said, it was non-specific but promising. Mr. O'Connor and I are meeting again with Mr. Browder and Mr. Aspuru this Friday, the 19th. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Sir?
If I might, oh, go ahead.
Well, Ms. Turner, I saw her first, Greg, I'm sorry.
Okay. So this is about the area, but a little different question. With Florida Municipal Power Agency, when they issue their bonds, they do not utilize the capital asset as the backup for their bond. They utilize the ratepayers. We are the collateral for their bonds.
The contracts, yes, and ultimately, customers—
In the event we had, yes, less ratepayers, less customers, how would that affect FMPA? Or would they object, or what? I was just trying to see what's going on with that one.
As between, it would not affect the city's contracts with FMPA. FMPA, there are kind of two points here. If we had fewer customers, if there were this hypothetical partial sale that has been discussed, it would not affect the contractual relationship between FMPA and the city of Vero Beach. The city of Vero Beach would still be obligated to make all payments required under those contracts. Okay? The other thing is that we are contractually prohibited by the PPAs with FMPA from selling all or substantially all of our system. You know, is 60% of our customer base substantially all? I can tell you that I believe FMPA would take the position that it is substantially all, and that if such an effort were undertaken, I would not, I'll just say it this way, I would not be surprised to see litigation initiated by FMPA to enforce the contract to prohibit us from making such a sale.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher?
I keep hearing they are reasonable or unreasonable rates. And then I heard you have the word "trial" along with the same sentence. Who would, what agency, what court would decide whether they are or not reasonable, and who would bring that to trial?
The town has brought that claim in their lawsuit. As I mentioned, that lawsuit is abated, but if the conflict resolution process does not bear fruit, the lawsuit can be reactivated, and it'll be heard in the circuit court in and for Indian River County.
Okay, thank you.
And whether it'll be a jury trial or a bench trial, I don't know.
Do we have a choice? Do we, the city, have a choice, or is that—
I'm mostly the PSC guy, but I believe that if we wanted a jury trial, we could demand a jury trial.
I don't want a jury trial.
Okay. I don't know if we can demand a bench trial.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kramer?
How do you think?
Ms. Graves?
I'm good.
Staff, Jim, do you have any comment?
No, sir, just what Chef has said, that we do have that meeting with OUC, and we're trying to work through the process, and this mediation thing is a process in itself, and so we will do that. We did get a little glimmer of hope from OUC. We think that we will be able to tweak some of the terms and conditions of our contract, but we've made it pretty clear to all parties involved that we will not be able to get FPNL rates. It's just, it's not in the cards. And unless, of course, there is some issue with fracking, then we might be better rates. It just all depends, or St. Lucy has an issue, but that affects us as well. But, you know, in the utility industry, the supply of your fuels is your critical part, and the pricing of your product. And gas right now is very plentiful and is relatively inexpensive.
You know, this comment, OUC supplies us about 60% of our power, FMPA about 40% give or take. Those are very rough numbers, and FMPA is approximately 10% more expensive, and OUC is not inexpensive. Let me phrase it that way. So that you have the possibility of any help we get from OUC, you still have to average it into the other 40. But it would be a material help, whatever that is.
Ms. Turner, you even further?
Just another question as to what the next step is, then, with the mediation process, and do you have another meeting set up?
Yes, the next meeting is a week from this Friday, September 26th. There is no meeting scheduled thereafter, but we will discuss at the meeting on the 26th what to do next. I had suggested to the group last month that we also talk about having a meeting to discuss utility authority issues. They did not want to commit to that at that time, so we'll just see what happens when we're there next Friday. After that, we may have more staff-level meetings to have substantive discussions or not. When I say "staff level," I mean me and Jim and Wayne, right? But eventually, the next step in the process will be a meeting of the elected representatives of all three conflicting entities, the county commission, the town council, and the city council. And after that, something else happens, and if we don't get there, then we go back to court.
And this meeting on the 26th of September, that's a Friday, I believe, that'll be held at what time and where, assuming it is open to the public?
Oh, it's open to the public. It's going to be in the Shores Town Hall. I don't remember if it's at 9:00 or 9:30, but I'm confident it's one or the other.
It's 9:00.
9:00, then, on Friday, the 26th.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Thank you.
Is the first CD, the audio CD, is that on our website of the first meeting?
Yes.
I just point that out to the public, if you're interested in what was said at the first meeting. It is on the website. I think Mr. Wright did an excellent job of defending us, as the case may be, or presenting the facts, as they may be. Anything else?
If I might, Wayne? Let me put you on the spot here. About this jury trial, or bench trial, do we have an option district court?
Well, it's local circuit court.
Circuit court, okay.
And I just don't remember in the pleadings. Of course, it's an abeyance. I don't know if the town demanded jury trial, but it's something that typically you can demand it or you can waive it, and—
So they demand a jury trial?
I don't—
I'm just hypothetically, they demand a jury trial, and we demand a bench trial. How does it get settled? The judge?
You get a jury trial, then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good to see you.
Glad to be here, thank you.
We'll now have general public comment, and these comments first. The purpose of public comment, which was, we talked about it at our last meeting in the resolution that was adopted, is really for you to present your opinion or facts to the city council. And you can speak once at any session. So for instance, if later on in the meeting, there's another item you're interested in, you can talk there. This is general public comment, you can speak about anything. But if you do have something that affects a later matter, you probably should bring it up then. Generally, there will be no debate allowed. We generally won't respond. You know, it's not for, "We're here to gather facts and your opinion." We have a three-minute rule, and there's a red light, I'll turn it on as a courtesy to let you know. And I guess that's about it. Who would like to come forward? I'll take the left side first. Raise your hand and come forward. Come forward, sir.
Good evening, Chuck Mecklen. I live on Trade Winds here in the city of Vero Beach, and I was, I wanted to comment about the process for the audit committee and the selection of an out-of-town firm in these tough times here in Vero Beach. The person, for 21 years, Raymond, and previously would have been Harris-Cotherman, did the audit situation for the city. They were ranked number five next to the bottom. They were the lowest person. A more expensive firm, out-of-town, was selected. And I realize that the last council meeting was when this discussed— was when this discussion actually took place, and that's why I'm bringing it up now, because I understand that it's per the contract or the already submittal of the selection, the contract is tonight. So, I just wanted to say that I find it distressing that we don't have a better process in RFPs when somebody of a local nature with local employees and pays local taxes and pays our local power bills, et cetera, doesn't have a stronger showing in the rankings. And in reviewing the rankings, I was really surprised with some of the numbers that came up. And again, I understand some big accounting firms can come in with very glitzy, showman-type presentations that sway people, but I would think that as many years as these folks have been a part of our community, and I personally use them and I know them and I believe in their ethics and their capability, and to have them ranked so low that they didn't even get the chance to do a face-on interview, I find not what I think of when I think of our city of Vero Beach. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, and I think under item, when the city manager presents this, I'm sure he'll comment and give a response to you. That probably is the better time for it, if it's okay with you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else on the left? On the right, who would like to come forward? Raise your hand. Come forward.
Good evening, my name is Maureen Beckham. I'm a life scout with Troop 567 in Vero Beach, Florida, out of Our Savior Lutheran Church. This is just a thank you note, for say. All right, this summer I completed my Eagle Scout project over at Beechwood Elementary. My project was to garden around the flagpoles and pressure watch the sidewalk areas for repainting and repainting the lines that people get around campus safely with. There was almost 15,000 square feet of lines, and thanks to Mr. Kramer and Mr. Fuller at the road and bridging department, I was able to borrow the striping machine to repaint the lines. This saved me countless man hours, and I cannot thank you guys enough. This machine, I would otherwise have to get on my hands and knees and paint, and it would have not really been accurate, for say, and that saved me that aggravation as well. Ms. Barker is absolutely thrilled with the results. She's the principal of Vero Beach Elementary. Thank you guys so, so much, and I just, that's just me thanking you guys. And I have a certificate for you, Mr. Kramer.
We'll come forward and give it.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have a comment?
Well, I was gonna say, just as a note, don't forget Peggy Lyons.
Yes.
She spent, I believe she spent all day...
Oh, yes.
Quite a trooper in staying out there and helping you guys.
She had a blast, she...
[laughing]
Nothing like, she was like happy, just relaxing, helping here, helping there, just very, very cheerful about it, so.
Good lady.
Yep. All righty.
Jay, another name I'd like to throw out is Monty Falls, who helped facilitate the whole exchange of the stripe machine and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
All right.
If I can, just go ahead.
Go ahead.
You know, just a quick note, I mean, we, here at Vero Beach, we really enjoy having the Boy Scouts around, and we've got plenty of projects, more if they want to participate here in Vero Beach and work on their Eagle Scout projects. We got, we got two of them? Okay, so Mr. Sleizek says we've got two of them, but I know the staff here at Vero Beach really enjoys working with the Boy Scouts, and we look forward to working with them in the future if possible.
All right, is there any further public comment? Seeing none on close public comment, and that will bring us to the consent agenda. Is any member of the city council want to pull an item for discussion, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, really for discussion, but I know we have some representatives from the Barbecue Blues, and I'd love for them to come up and tell us a little bit about their organization and give us some background.
Okay, are there any other further changes, and then we'll go on to your point, if that's okay with you?
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No one opposed, 5-0. Please come forward, and we'll deal with the consent agenda passes, but we're dealing with three for you to tell us about it.
Well, it'd be year one for Vero Beach. We're doing our third year.
Can I get your name, please?
Paul Fiano with Flavors Festivals. So, I produce events around the world for other companies, and we live in Jensen, and I always wanted to do an event right here in town or locally. So, now we're year three in Jensen, and we want to expand up to Vero. So, very family-oriented, food, music, and local artists, and a day in the park is what the event's all about.
Tell us when it is and all that sort of thing. Let's advertise here.
We, we're just starting now, this is March 7th. It'd be a Saturday event, 10 to 10.
And do you have a website or any other thing people can contact you?
We do, it's Barbecue and Blues, and we also have Flavors Festivals.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming forward. All right, that'll move us to public hearings.
Need to adopt that.
Motion to approve.
Part three.
Second.
Second, third.
Aye.
Just say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we did that before, but that's okay. Ordinances, which moves us to 4A1. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida repealing Article 5 in Chapter 74 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach related to traffic signal violation enforcement by the use of traffic signal violation detectors, red light cameras, providing for conflict severability, providing for an effective date requested by the city attorney. Wayne, your comment, please?
This is your public hearing on this ordinance, repealing basically red light traffic cameras for enforcement of running red lights. I'm sure you're gonna have a lot of the public standing up to object to you repealing this.
Any public comment in this? Anyone want to object? Seeing no objection?
Motion to approve the repealing.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait, is this a roll call? Go ahead, Ms. Vock.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. That moves us to 4B, 4B1. A resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida establishing its rule prescribing the days and times for regular city council meetings, provided for an effective date requested by the city attorney. Wayne, you again, please.
And this is, does only require this one hearing. This is implementing your recently adopted provision in the meetings part of the code where you decided to adopt your regular meeting dates and times by resolution.
All right, any public comment?
And it does, it would establish your meetings as they are now. The first meeting of the month is on the first Tuesday at 9:30 a.m. The second meeting is the third Tuesday of each month at 6:00 p.m., as we have today.
Mrs. Vock, do you have any idea to that, by the way?
No, I think you covered it all.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Council comment or motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Turner, seconds. Roll call, please, Mrs. Vock.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. That moves us to 4B2. A resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida finding necessity for and authorizing emergency purchase of and contracting for equipment associated services requiring, required for repairs, electric station, substation 11, providing for an effective date requested by the T and D director. And Ted, if you want, I don't know whether Jim wants you to come up or not, Ted, but substation 11 is the one that serves the moorings in that area, south of the city. It's the one on the island.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, and substation 11 is where the switchgear has some age. Ted, don't sit down yet, because you'll get into details. And what we have done is that we've sort of Band-Aid 11 for this, some of this switchgear and using nine, substation nine and 10 to back up during these peak times. We're just very concerned about failure. This is an emergency purchase, but at the same time, we did get three quotes. We got the price of the materials at their cost, so we feel very comfortable with that. And the company that we are employing here, we feel very comfortable in being able to perform the services. As you noted, it's about $626,000.
And by replacing this one, we're keeping 10 in better condition?
Actually, we're improving 11, and 10...
But right now, we're running 10 in place of 11?
Well, we're, go ahead.
We're gonna place the switchgear at substation 11, share the load between Central Beach and North Beach.
Okay.
What, you're nine and 10?
Correct.
11 is to the south, 10 is at the SunTrust Bank, and 9 is up in the shores. And actually, what you get involved is, there's only one transformer in the middle, 110. It really takes either coming from the north or the south to serve Central Beach, among other little things. So, this is, has to happen, but anyway, that's my opinion.
Absolutely.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
In reviewing the bid on page 11, it's a bid validity that expires 6/12/2014.
Hmm. That doesn't work.
Doesn't work for me, but I thought maybe if they have a letter from, yeah, from them saying that, yeah, that bid's still valid.
Maybe they need 2015.
Probably is. I can get with John and verify that.
Yeah, but they have verified recently that they're, they would honor the bid at this price. If not, then we would obviously have to do something. This was sort of a negotiated price, making sure that we got the right equipment and the equipment we needed.
Need to chase that down, though, that's serious.
We will do that.
I'll do that first thing, one.
Ms. Turner?
Thank you. And also reviewing, I noticed that, yeah, originally it had offered a discount if we'd made a decision by the 30th of June. I'm not sure what happened with delay in bringing this forward. It seems like it's something that would have been fairly critical. Did we have any other issue in it?
It was just complex because of the nature of it being a retrofit, not a new installation. So, they had to do onsite, you know, field visits to all three companies to verify everything for the fit.
Which is fine, but once they did it and made their offer, we have, you know, some particular delays and...
We were just waiting for them, information to come back for bid purposes, for John and all that.
The key was, is we need to get it right the first time.
Right.
And I think what Ted's doing, saying is that this was a quote they gave us, but after that, we also wanted to come in and verify what kind of equipment, because the equipment is the real critical part of this, and so that was...
That's fine. Thanks. If you would just, yeah, verify that, that we're voting on today is still valid.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, further, Mr. Kramer or Mr. Fletcher?
No, I just, we do need to chase that date, though, that's serious business.
I just, I'm just kind of curious, why do we need a resolution on it? Why wasn't this like on a consent agenda item?
Well, because being an emergency purchase, this typically would go through the normal RFP process, and because of that, there is an emergency provision in the statutes, and it's very specific about what the findings need to be. So, that's why we wanted to do a resolution, so that the council could make those findings and support the emergency purchase.
So, we're declaring this purchase an emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the life of this particular purchase? I mean, it's gonna be extensive, isn't it?
Probably 35-plus.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're paying for it out of cash, really, even though it's gonna be a fixed investment. My point, obviously, is this is an example of a rather large cash expenditure, which is really a fixed investment, which could be financed other ways. I let it go there.
Okay.
Move to adopt as presented?
I'll second. Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted, thank you, Jim. That moves us to 4B2. No, I'm sorry.
Aye.
It moves us to 5. Ordinances and resolutions for first reading by title. Future public hearings required. When would the future public hearing be?
It'll be on October 7th.
Okay. A resolution of the city council of Vero Beach, Florida approving the transmittal to the state of Florida Department of Economic Development of a proposed ordinance amending the text of the land use element of the Vero Beach Comprehensive Plan, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date requested by Planning and Development Director, Mr. McGary.
All right, we could read both of them, but that's fine. Basically, this is the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan we've been talking and working over the last two to three years on for original town. At tonight's meeting, basically, for those who have not been here before on these, the hearing itself will be a transmittal hearing, so you will not be adopting the ordinance, you will be basically sending it off to the Department of Economic Opportunity, the state, before it comes back for your adoption later. So, it'll be a couple months yet to go before on this thing. So, I intend to give a full presentation on the ordinance at the hearing, so unless you have some specific questions of me tonight, I...
Well, I should read 5...
Go ahead and read that.
...B into the record then. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida amending the text of the land use element of the Vero Beach Comprehensive Plan to include an objective and policies for original town neighborhood and technical appendix four, providing for conflict and severability for providing for effective date requested by Planning and Development Director. Now, we haven't read it in the record, there'll be plenty of time for public comment, but we should have public comment now, is that correct?
I think you can open it if you want to have comment, just, I understand, we'll have a public hearing on this where we'll give a presentation.
All right. Mrs. Turner, first.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, you know, one question.
I apologize.
Or comment. I was just glad to see us looking at utilizing incentives within this ordinance as opposed to imposing regulations, and I think that's just a very important approach for us.
And that, thank you very much, because that was one of the things the neighborhood meeting brought out after, I gave it more thought our staff did, we said, do you know what? We can regulate these people to death, but we're not getting the investment in the neighborhood, so we need to look at other ways. So, thank you.
Good job.
All right, public comment. Seeing none, and I'm sure there will be when it comes back. Now, it'll come back October 2nd, then it'll be sent off, then it'll come back yet again. Is that incorrect?
The 7th.
We need to take a vote on both of these individually, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move to adopt 5A?
Second.
Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Move to adopt 5B?
Second.
Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Move to adopt 5B?
Second.
Mrs. Vock?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Mrs. Vock, that moves us to your matters.
Yes, sir, and I think Mr. McGary.
In response to the application from Mr. Tomlinson, the staff prepared a memo on this code enforcement lien reduction. We go through the details on that. Based on our review of this and the amount requested, we don't believe there's any, any really reason rationale to provide a, any kind of reduction for this lien reduction. Basically, the lien reduction, or the amount of lien is like $1,900 and plus, and it's a very small portion of the entire, of what the individual bought the property. And we also go, we don't think it's an inordinate burden. Property was in fairly good shape, even though there needs to be improvements, and when And when he purchased the property, he was fully aware if there was a lien on the property. He did it. So it's really up to your discretion how you do it. I don't know if Mr. Tomlinson here?
Yes, is there any public comment?
Well, I guess he isn't here to.
So there's no public comment. Counsel, Mr. Turner.
I would just agree with staff's recommendation. I mean, if the city were to really, yeah, simply to release the lien, then we might as well just get rid of code enforcement, because we're just taking it out. It's easier to, yeah, to kind of get it clear than to comply.
Right. I think when you have a significant lien on it and the property needs to be brought up, it probably...some reduction is...would be in order, but in this case, no.
In this case, I don't believe so either.
Mrs. Vok, do we need a vote on this?
Yes.
I move to poll the staff's recommendation.
Second.
Can we do a voice vote on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
That brings it to you, Jim. Your matters.
The one item that I have undermined is approval of the Audit Services Engagement Letter from...with Cherry Beckett. As you remember to sort of give a little history on this process, back in October of last year, in 2013, the council extended the existing contract with our supplier of accounting services. The council at that time said, "Let's go out for an RFP and look at other options" and to bring that back. So we did that. We came back and recommended to the city council, you needed to form an audit committee, which you did. We took three members from the Finance Commission. They at first worked on the RFP that would go out for solicitations. They worked under that, under the auspices of what state law requires, and it is a professional services contract. It's not something that can be done by pricing...or is not supposed to be done by pricing. I'll put it that way. And so they did that. We got back six inquiries. The audit committee met again, did the evaluation of the responses that they received, picked four firms that they would do, sit down discussions with those firms. Those firms came in and gave presentations. The audit committee had an evaluation chart in which they arrived at points for each one of the firms, and it was unanimous that Cherry Beckett be the selected firm. At the last council meeting, the city council instructed the...myself to go and negotiate a contract with Cherry Beckett to provide those accounting services for us next year, which we have done, and that is what is in front of you tonight. The question has come up about the pricing issue. It's very important in, when you do accounting services, the issue of pricing depends on the experience of the people assigned to your account. So therefore, you could have someone with great experience who's a higher-priced, sort of like with attorneys, and...but has more experience going in. The other thing to remember when you engage a new accounting firm, there's obviously going to be some startup cost involved in that. The firm that we had did very good service for us. We had absolutely no complaints with that. But when we went out and the interviews were taken, Cherry Beckett was the recommended firm to the city council.
Wayne, I have...Mr. Mayor, if I might...
Go ahead, Mr. Fletcher.
I have a serious problem with the whole process, to tell you the truth. I think what the committee should have done was to give us a 1, 2, 3 rating, a 1, 2, 1 through 6, however many, and let us choose whom we want to do the services. These people have done service for the City of Vero Beach for many years. I called around to a number of the departments over the last few days, asking, "Were there any complaints whatsoever?" No one has even the slightest amount of complaint. Nobody said a thing, except how well they'd done their job. They're local. They have...we can call them. Within five minutes, they'll be here, or within five minutes, we can go to talk to them. I don't like the process that we went through to do this. We need to choose from the 1 through 5, or 1 through whatever, as to which one we want, not the selection committee. It's taken it out of our hands, and I don't like that, losing that control.
Mrs. Graves, do you have a comment?
Well, important that we do it by state statute, because there's very specific requirements for this.
Unfortunately, this is one of those that...I don't want to step on any toes, but the CPAs probably had a pretty good lobby with the legislature, and they set out specifically, very specifically, the process that must be used. It's required to be used, and they require this selection committee. And believe it or not, one of the requirements in the statute is, in this instance, and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe price was included as one of the criteria, and I think that was only 10%, but it was included in the criteria. And what the statute says is, if price is used in the criteria for selection, the number one firm must be selected by the governing body, the number one ranked by the committee. And that's what you did. You followed the statute. And unfortunately, that's the process we're stuck with.
I'm just telling you, I don't like it. I don't agree with it.
Yeah. Well, I can understand that. I mean, it's...
$58,000 is something...there's something in a woodpile here. It stinks. Taking that sort of decision out of the local elected community is wrong.
It also, under that same statute, determines how you select your audit committee. In other words, myself, or Cindy, or city staff, or city council members cannot be on that audit selection committee. It has to be independent.
Mr. Turner, you look like you want to comment.
Just wanted to say that surely that, yeah, this award is no reflection on the fine work that our local...that Raymond has done for us for over these years. I served on the Finance Commission back, I guess, in 2008, and at that time, we'd renewed the contract. I do agree, however, in...for audit-type services, that having a rotation over a period of time is a helpful...helpful thing. You really want your auditors to come in with fresh eyes and to look at things, so...because we had unanimous ranking for this firm, I move we go forward with your word.
Anyone else comment? I will second her motion.
I just wanted to say one thing. I wanted, you know...you know, the auditors that we have by no means were deficient in any way that I saw or anybody else that saw. You know, if we wanted a local preference, that should have been established when we started the RFP process. However, once the RFP process got moving, I think any type of actions to deviate from that RFP process, I believe, would expose us to liability from some of the bidders if that...
Yeah, you can't change that now.
Right.
Once your specifications are set, your criteria.
I think in the future, perhaps, maybe we...if we could just be reminded about local preference when we start going out to RFP, I'd appreciate it.
Can we have local preference? Will the statute allow us to set local preference in the RFP on this particular type of...
It's not one of the criteria in the statute, whether or not the committee could establish that.
You know, again, the criteria that we use in the RFP were very closely followed the Auditor General, you know, guidelines for auditor selection. You know, again, certainly, it's a qualifications-based, more important what other kinds of entities have you audited, and are they similar to the city? And can you, you know, rise to those technical challenges as opposed to...as opposed to that local preference, so...
Also, another comment. Hopefully, in the future, we won't wait 21 years, because it is a very good practice to every four or five years that you ought to have a new set of eyes that come in, just as a general principle of running the operation. And it's...and if we wanted to put in local preference and give points, as we did price, I mean, you obviously could do something like that. You just can't give it the preferential, because you've got to remember what you're after is the auditing service component, which is the qualifications.
At one point in time, the...as Jim points out, the...and as you had mentioned, the GFOA recommended best practice was to have a mandatory rotation. And they backed away from that because of the concern that sometimes you didn't get enough qualified firms proposing. And...but in this case, we had, you know, six really good proposals. And so, you know, there was a period of time where mandatory rotation was the thing to do, so...
Okay. I'll go ahead and call the question, unless there's something that comes before. But what kind of a vote do you need on this?
Just a voice vote.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one, it passes. All right. City managers' matters, if anyone has on the council has a question, it's a good time for it.
Any other questions, issues?
All right. Seeing none, city attorney matters, if there are any further matters for the city attorney from council?
Go ahead.
Now, just one thing, I'm just sorry, attorney. I know we're looking at this ordinance on addressing marijuana and possible pot shops. Now, I got to thinking about this some more, and I kept wondering, how is the city going to handle personnel issues? If we have medical marijuana, how are you going to test your equipment operators, your people driving city vehicles? Our police officers? And, you know, now the marijuana that's being offered, this THC content, where it used to be 2% or 3% is now in the 20% or more range, you know? And I guess these are...
It's...
Yeah, I don't know. We could come up with all the answers to these kind of things, but I think, you know, from a city standpoint, it's a real concern.
Well, it does come down to one thing on the testing for employees, anything that's an impairment. And so if you do a drug testing, and typically speaking, we do our drug testing when there is a question of impairment issues. So we will keep that as a part of our personnel rules, and...
I guess I just ask if we could take a closer look at our, you know, employment things and see if there's anything, because if they're taking medicine, yeah, like I said, they're claiming this to be, you know, medicinal.
It's a concern for not just even local governments and employers statewide. So it is something that's...it's another thing that comes out of this issue.
So are you...are you thinking that in order to do this, you need a prescription like any other drug?
Oh, it's definitely true of doctor, yes. It has to be prescribed by doctor.
So as with my medication, I carry my medication, and I have the bottle with the prescription on it, so you'd have to have a prescription on your person if you're using it, right? Wouldn't you think?
Well, they would have...certainly have to have a doctor's prescription.
Or supply.
Right.
I mean, with some of these medications, they'll tell you, "Do not operate heavy machinery. Do not do these things." So you would disclose those things before you came to work, or there would be a policy in place.
There needs to be a policy in place, yeah.
And this is something that we would be working with HR on and looking at.
Well, you're going to have to have that question in the application. What are your medications? Do they impair your use or your operation of machinery, et cetera? You've got to...
There's definitely something we'll need, because we are...the city is a drug-free workplace, and that comes into play with your workers' compensation. Because we're a drug-free workplace, the city gets a break on the premiums for your workers' comp insurance. So this is something I'm sure even the workers' comp experts are looking at, so how do we deal with this? So it's something we definitely have in mind, and it's going to have to be addressed.
When are you coming forward with something? Where are we?
Oh, just scratching the surface.
Yes, but the idea was if you were going to come forward to do it before...
Oh, as far as the regulation of marijuana dispensaries, that's something we're working with Tim McGary on. We anticipate...because it's zoning, it would go through the Planning and Zoning Board first. I believe we're shooting for maybe a first reading in October for...I think around October 6th for...
Yeah.
City Council.
Yeah. That would work, if we can get it done before...
And by the way, the...what I've been led to believe is, the amendment, if it passes, would not go into effect until something like January 6th.
Well, the amendment... The amendment is to use...to allow the use of medical...it doesn't have any legislative...
Right. Right. There's the legislature's got it.
There's no legislative legs to this. It has to be adopted after the fact.
Yeah, and they'll have to...well, what we're looking at is, ahead of time, is to look at location, and Tim can explain better. He's got a draft that he's just sent me.
We have a draft done. We're shooting for October 4th, public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. Okay? So we're advertising on...so we're still working...I'm still working with Wayne and Peggy on the final thing, but we do have a draft done on that. And I think the point, how long the state's going to take to get through this project, they're still working on the Charlotte's Web. I went to a seminar last week on all this, and they're still having arguments over that. So this is much broader.
Yep.
I mean, this is really broad, if you read the amendment, and so it could take a while before this is really...
But they haven't even figured out how to get it into the state legally.
Oh, yeah. I don't...
Even if it passes, they haven't brought...
I mean, you already brought up one of the HR problems. I don't think this has been fully done.
I was going to say, I just appreciate, yeah, the efforts to get ahead of this game and to have something in play with our codes.
And all the attorney said, "The smart thing is for communities to do something now." The worst...you know, you can come back and change it later, but the ones that do it upfront are usually better off on everything that's happened, so...okay.
Keep churning away.
Jim, has Human Resources looked into this as well?
Yes. As a matter of fact, part of the conversation will include not only zoning, but Human Resources with their city attorney, so...and Gabrielle's obviously aware of what's turning out there. She'll be working with our risk manager, who also probably would be part of this process as well.
Sure.
All right. If...I think we moved forward to the agenda. Are there any further for the city attorney or city manager? All right. The next item on the agenda, I put on the agenda, and I'll preface it this way, it's really more of a dialogue tonight. But the first responsibility and the first reason to have government is to protect its citizens, to protect its citizens. And not only its citizens, but its guests. And I think the second reason we have government is we have to protect the wherewithal of those citizens to make a living. In other words, back where I come from, you know, the fields and the farms and the barns, but in the modern world, the restaurants and the shops and the hotels. So what I'm interested in here is, Mr. Connor, for you to have your people review where we are as far as being sure that we're doing the best possible job of protecting our people.
Yes, sir. I stand behind the results of our police department and what they've done. I think they've been exemplary in their efforts, but I think you're really talking about the lottery and some of those issues that we are now confronted with, based on the concerns or the problems that occurred at McDonald's. But the police department has taken some very positive steps. They've gone out and received releases from property owners where we can enforce vagrancy on private property. You recently received a notice of one of those enforcement things, where we received a nice letter or an email from the ACLU, but we were within our rights. We gave a warning notice and went through the proper process and procedures. And it's important that residents understand there is a process. You just can't, even if you have the right to go in and on private property and try to move a vagrant, you have to give him a notice or her, whichever the case may be. And they have the right to leave at that time. You cannot make an arrest. It's only if they come back and violate that again. So there are procedures. In the public areas are even more concerned, but I believe the city attorney has given out what our codes are. We have been able to utilize these codes, for example, at Pocahontas Park, where we had a recent issue there involving three vagrants that were there. Now, it did require us to take down one of our pavilions, because we found out that they were using that for shade. And then the other thing, we had to disconnect the electric. We found some of our homeless actually carry cell phones, and that's where they charge their cell phones. So we've disconnected all the electric in order to discourage that type of use. But one of the things that it's most important for enforcement, we have opening and closing times at the parks, which allows us, when the park is closed, we can enforce the code of no vagrancy in there. So we are taking those...implementing those steps. Obviously, when something like this occurs, we sort of...it brings it to the forefront, and our officers are really out doing, I think, a very good job in that enforcement, in making sure that our residents and our visitors, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, our visitors are equal to our residents in trying to maintain a safe environment in our community. That's one of the things that makes Vero Beach as great as it is.
Isn't it true that the police department now has, what, affidavits? Is it from...
Yes, sir. They're affidavits from property owners, and that allows them, after hours, if they find vagrants that are occupying the properties, that they can go in and, again, make the notation and slight them initially to have them removed. And the second, if you violate it the second time, they make the arrest. The last one that you received the notice on, that individual was incarcerated for
You know, the other comment that I've gotten at Miracle Mile specifically, is people coming out of stores, maybe women, or maybe older gentlemen, and they're carrying bags, and people come up to them and say, I want to carry your bag, you know. In effect, it's a form of panhandling. In other words, they don't need anyone to carry their bag, but they're afraid not to allow the person to carry their bag. And that's certainly objectionable. Also, anyone that's standing there asking, I mean, it's perfectly fine for people to donate of their own free will, but to be asked on the street is, to me, objectionable.
The only thing we need is for somebody, one of the businesses or the property owner, let us know, and we will go down there and do the appropriate measures to correct that situation. And on the streets, and the chief is here tonight, on the streets of what we're doing in that process, but Chief, if you don't mind-
Do you mind if I ask you a direct question? Do you have what you need to protect the people and guests and businesses of Vero Beach?
Yes, sir, absolutely. With regard to Miracle Mile and Treasure Coast Plaza, we were receiving today an affidavit for Miracle Mile and Treasure Coast Plaza. Actually, we had Treasure Coast Plaza receiving that today, and we already had the Miracle Mile. Miracle Mile is considered the fresh market side, and Treasure Coast Plaza is the public side. So, we can combat things like that, people approaching and panhandling, it's private property. So, we were, I think that's a liberty group there, and we're receiving their affidavit today, believe it or not. And as I mentioned when we talked the other day, the whole U.S. corridor, for the most part, we visited from the Kmart Plaza to 20th Street, and they were all on board. They welcomed us, and they all have affidavits, for the most part. So, they're, as property, private property owners, again, we can enforce trespassing.
How about 14th? The obvious question.
I'm sorry?
How about 14th?
14th Avenue?
Yes, sir.
We have to visit 14th Avenue, but I can tell you, standing here today, that if there's anybody that has private property, private business that would like to do the same, they can certainly contact us as well and come down to the police department, and we'll accommodate that as well. But I think what we have in place is adequate. You can't sleep in the parks, you can't trespass after the hours, as Mr. O'Connor mentioned, you can't solicit in the parks. So, I think what, from the ordinance standpoint, and from a state statute standpoint, I think we have what we need, and it's adequate at this time.
Is it, while we have you? I noticed on your card, you have a note, all the cards, that it's okay to ask. If a homeless person stops you and asks you for a ride somewhere, can you give them a ride to a homeless shelter?
Sure, sure. If it's, you know, we're obviously, you know, not a taxi service, but we're here to serve the public. And if someone is in need of a ride, and we determine that they truly are in need of a ride and need to go somewhere, and they're safer where they're, where we're going to take them, by all means. We're not against, you know, as I'm sure all-
Now, there's just been some talk about, an issue about someone had asked, and they evidently were refused, so.
Yeah. Again, we don't, you know, make it a habit of, we do the same for anybody.
Yeah, you're not a taxi service, I understand.
We do the same for anybody if they're in need.
Show need, yeah.
Yeah. And, like I said, we, what we find is, it's not we're against the issue of homeless, and we've been dealing with it for many years here, and always will, to some extent. But what we do see is using the restroom on private property and in public areas, as we mentioned, charging their cell phones with power outlets, drinking, disorderly conduct, leaving their trash on people's private property, fighting disturbances. Some of you may remember back in 1993, it was a transient by the last name of Cornet-
Yep.
-who abducted the young little girl out of the Charles Park House. So, from, unfortunately, from time to time, you know, serious situations like that occur. And we made an arrest very swiftly in that, but it didn't take away from what happened, so.
Well, I would encourage you to transport, if at all possible, air on the transportation side, take them somewhere if they need it.
Again, that's what we do here. We serve the public, sir.
Great.
I just think there's a lack of facilities of where to go.
That's true.
Where do you take them?
There is, there is. The source is not an overnight facility. They help out during the daytime, only during cold hours during the winter months, they may open their doors to be housed. Camp Haven is all males, and they have, of course, there's no alcohol, no drugs, and it's a regimen there. Some of the churches and Samaritan Center, things like that, help out. The Homeless Center on 4th Street is families, for the most part, so we do have a limited resources as far as housing people.
Thank you, Chief of Castle.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
That concludes my matters. Mr. Kramer?
I'm fine.
Ms. Turner?
Under Council Matters, the FMPA September Board Meeting was canceled. However, they are going to have an executive committee meeting for the All Requirements Project, and they will be discussing the Taylor Swap, so they'll be at that on Thursday. They did notify the members that Stanton 2 Project and the St. Lucy Project, there would be budget additions for the coming 1450 budget year. We'll be receiving those for October. Participated in the Tower, the Tunnel to Tower Race. Vero Beach was one of nine cities in the United States that was chosen for this commemorative race. And along the racetrack, they had photographs of all those that were first responders that lost their lives at the towers. So, just wanted to give, congratulations to Gina Kef, who was the race director. It was a wonderful event, and really appreciate all that effort. It's a quick note, Friday, September the 26th, downtown Main Street, from 6:00 to 9:00, they have a Rockin' Autumn Band with the GT Express. And Saturday on September the 27th, I hope all the council members, I know many of the city staff, will be participating in the United Way Day of Caring. I think we have a city team that'll be at the Gifford Youth Center, so look forward to that, and hope many of y'all will find a project on the United Day. Thanks.
Ms. Graves?
I attended the Beach and Shores Advisory Committee meeting yesterday over at the county. Some interesting things coming up. They're getting ready to debut their comprehensive beach plan for the entire county, which will talk about beach restoration, sand, dune restoration, and the outlook of that, where it needs to go in the future. And as we find out about the public comment dates, I think it would really be beneficial for everyone in this community to take a look at the plan and what they have in store for us. Other than that, I'll yield to Mr. Fletcher.
Mr. Fletcher doesn't have any issues. Move to adjourn.
All in favor of aye, or adjourn?